Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'll call in to order the open session of the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on February 20th at 7:03 PM. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join with Mr. Cynthia Jones in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. At this time, would you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you? All right, now, Booey Voices, we're gonna have to stop humming for just a second if you don't like your hum, because if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Back to humming. It sounds nice. I like it. It's very peaceful. First up, we have, as you can see, this wonderful group right in front of us. We have our program, which we are about to hear from a great group that we love hearing multiple times. We see them all over town, all over the community, and last week, you were all over the state at the Texas Music Educators Association. So let me introduce to you, from Bowie High School, the Volunteer Voices led by Jeremy Lobah and Stanley Moody, the directors. Take it away. All right, Volunteer Voices, don't leave yet. I get to brag on you for just a second. Ms. Wilmot-Sonata, I saw how excited you were back there as a former principal of Bowie. I agree with you. It's pretty awesome, especially this beatboxer right here. Can you teach me that? I'm kidding. You can't really teach me that.
Microphone. Billy.
You don't have enough... You don't have enough... Got the microphone. Sorry, sorry, sorry. You don't have enough time. So you guys are great. We love seeing y'all perform. Y'all are some of my greats, and we love seeing you all the time. It's really great. And let me just talk about some of the honors this wonderful group from Bowie High School has gotten, besides one of my personal favorites, but you also actually win awards. So you've won honors. You've won Best in Class, Best Overall, Best Original Song, which I've heard a couple of y'all's original songs y'all have done over the years. Members also received numerous academic and musical honors and scholarships, and last week, y'all had the pleasure of singing at the Texas Music Educators Association, their conference, right?
They actually didn't. They had a...
Oh. Perfect, okay. Well, they should've. Send an email. Send an email on that. So, guys, let me... Guys and girls, thank you so much. Y'all are wonderful. We're very, very proud of you. Students like that's the reason we sit up here and do all the work up here today. So thank you so much for all this, and we look forward to seeing you at more concerts and more events. So thank you so much, guys. Good job. It was fun. It was watching him smile, watching Ms. Wilmot-Sonata in the back smile, and I think I had a permanent smile on there. I see them, and I keep thinking of the kids from Pentatonix.
That's what I was thinking. Somebody needs to be sending their tape.
Yeah, that acapella is...
It's amazing.
Voices can truly, truly do that.
It's hard to have a lady after that.
It is. Mr. Hibs, I was gonna ask them, let you go ahead and do a special board performance at their next concert, but they want to keep winning awards. (laughing)
It wasn't so true.
Yeah. No, I haven't volunteered myself. I can't. I can't be up there. So with that, we will move on to our next item, appointments. We don't have any tonight. We don't have a public hearing. We don't have any cards for open forum for agenda items. We'll move to our first action item. Consider salary adjustments necessary to reflect market value in accordance with TASB's Salary Market Analysis. Dr. Gavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and this is a continuation of our discussion that we've had with the board previously, and Ms. Powell is gonna have a brief presentation about where we are with our market study and recommendation. Ms. Powell.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Gavassos, good evening. We've discussed before many times our strategic plan and different elements of that, and in particular, in the strategic plan, there is a goal that AISD will recruit and retain the most effective people by rewarding excellence and providing opportunities for continual growth. One of the strategies in our strategic plan to help us achieve that goal is that the district would engage a human resource consultant or consulting firm to review our current salary schedule to ensure that compensation is properly aligned within the system and conduct an external market analysis of our salaries to ensure that our salaries are competitive. We went through that process in the fall. We did an RFP process. We engaged TASB, or Texas Association of School Boards, to perform that study for us. They did their work during the fall, and on January 29th, TASB presented their report to the board, and at that meeting, the board voted to accept the recommendations in the report and directed administration to bring back to the board individual recommendations, or recommendations for individual adjustments necessary to reflect market in all of our jobs. So tonight, we are bringing back to you some information on those individual adjustments. And so just a couple of reminders. With the Salary Market Study, one of the findings was that the raises in the equity adjustments that the board gave to teachers last summer made us very competitive in that category compared to the state. And so the study and the individual adjustments, or adjustments to individual employee salaries, were really focused on the other half of our employee base. Teachers make up roughly half of our employee base, a little over half, and so this really deals with the other half of the employees, the discussion we're gonna have this evening. So in TASB's work, they created new salary structures for us, new pay ranges for each pay grade. Their study found that our pay grades overall were low compared to market. So they developed new pay grades for us and brought all them up to reflect market. And so once they did the pay, the new pay structures, they went back and looked at each individual and looked at three different criteria to determine whether each individual needed to have an adjustment to his or her salary so that their salary was reflective of market. And so the three criteria are on the screen at the moment. The first pass that they made, if you will, was to look at everyone's salary to make sure that it was at least equal to the new minimum for the new pay grades that they had developed. So that was the first pass. Second pass, they looked at the individuals in those, in that career path, the teacher career path, to make sure that their salaries were equitable with teachers. We have diagnosticians, counselors, and other professionals that come out of the teaching ranks. Those positions typically require a master's degree, two years' teaching experience, and likely require a license to perform these particular duties. And so what the study found was last summer, when the board made equity adjustments to the teacher's salary schedule, it actually caused some compression there between the teachers and then these other positions that have come out of those teaching ranks. And so they made a pass through all of those positions and checked to ensure that individual salaries in those job families were at least 2% above what a teacher with comparable experience and a master's degree would make. And that was the second adjustment. The third one, then, was an adjustment where they went through and they looked at every individual, and they said, okay, if your current salary is less than the new midpoint on the new pay range, and you have above-average experience in your current job, and that's real important, it's in your current job, not your total breadth of experience over the years in other jobs that may be in the same field, but in your current job, if you have above-average experience compared to their pay family, then you received an adjustment. And that adjustment was a 3% of the new midpoint. So based on that, this is a summary schedule showing the adjustments that were identified for individuals. We identified that there are 2,307 individuals that are in need of individual salary adjustments to their salaries, and those totaled to $2,784,172. And the fringes on that, the Medicare and TRS and what have you, totaled to $97,000. So that brings the total estimated cost of these adjustments to $2,881,618. That would be the annual cost, the full 12-month cost, if these adjustments are all approved. If these are implemented currently in the '13-'14 year, and if we assume that they are implemented with, or applied as an effective date of March 1st, then the total cost for this year's budget would be $922,967. Now, I do want to make the point that these adjustments are based on individual circumstances and how you fare looking in those three criteria. There was not any adjustment, broad-scale adjustment, where we said, okay, this entire group of employees needs to get a particular percentage raise. Everything is very specific to how individuals relate to the new pay ranges that have been There is a new law that we need to discuss and that we have to take into consideration in this process. There was a law passed by the 83rd Legislature this last spring. It was signed by the governor, became effective June 14th, and that law applies to contract employees, so individuals that have those Chapter 21 contracts or any type of employment contract. The law requires that a board hold a public hearing before approving any sort of a mid-contract adjustment to salary. And then there are several things you have to specifically state in that hearing. You have to say the source and the amount of the funding that you'll use to make the adjustment. You have to explain the reason for the adjustment, including stating the public purpose for making the adjustment, and then you have to state the terms for how that funding will be distributed. So in summary, on January 29th, the board did accept TASB's recommendations and directed administration to bring back to you all information on individual adjustments that are necessary to reflect market in accordance with TASB's Salary Market Analysis. And so, as we saw just a moment ago, there are 2,307 total employees that are, have met the criteria that TASB used for salary adjustments, and those adjustments total up to $2,881,000 if implemented in full for a year. So our next step, if the board chooses to go forward and approve those adjustments, would be to, mid-year in the '13-'14 year, the next step would be to actually come back and hold a public hearing on March 20th and have an action item on that agenda to consider final approval for these adjustments. And those adjustments would be applied as of March 1st. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Perfect. Any questions from my colleagues? Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Ms. Powell, could you go back a couple of slides to the one that says adjustment criteria? The middle one there about the counselors and diagnosticians, did we take into account there the days worked? In other words, sometimes we see that hourly rate, for example, for a counselor, if you're compared to a teacher, got out of whack because the pays weren't keeping up and the counselors were working more days. Was that taken into account when this was done?
Right.
Okay.
It is.
Thank you. President Hogg, since we have to bring this back anyway, and I'd recommend that we just not take action on it tonight, and that we direct the administration to schedule a public hearing for our next board meeting, and we'll vote on it then.
I think that would be a fine recommendation if I see nods from colleagues thinking that's the route to go. I think that's perfect. Mr. Barron, let me ask one more question, Ms. Powell. Ms. Powell, in... Because I see that slide right there on the counselors and diagnostics... I know, I always miss that one. Counselors and diagnosticians are 2% above masters. They both require masters, but our counselors and diagnosticians have to have a certificate in addition.
Right.
And that's the reasoning for that 2% for that level, because it's... Okay. And I think that's a major point to make. And let me ask Mr. Cale, who is our head of HR, you know, I always want to ask, what are our outcomes? What's our outcomes base by having this adjustment? I think we all know it's recruiting, but then from the HR side, what do we think we're gonna achieve out of this?
You know, thank you, President Hogg. I think there's a couple of things that are key. One is that it puts us in a position from both a recruitment and a retention aspect, both of which are costly, that we're doing an effective job, we're getting the right people, and we're offering a wage that's market-competitive, that's gonna allow us to sustain those employees and not have the cost of attrition of those employees. I also think that it absolutely sets the stage by being market-based for pay-for-performance. You can't have a pay-for-performance system if you aren't first-aligned with your respective jobs and your respective ranges and categories to the market, and then, once you're there, you pay competitively based on performance within that range from the men to the, excuse me, from the men to the mid to the max. So I think those are probably the critical factors.
Perfect. I think those are important, and I think we also always have to remember pay is just one element of job satisfaction. It's an element. It's an important element. No one wants to work for free. We all have to have good living wages and make that, but it's also one element. Work environment, many other things come into play as a big factor, and I know you take that into account.
I do. In fact, you know, the core belief on my part is you need to pay competitively, but for most of us, it's two weeks after that paycheck is changed that that's now your pay. It's not really a pay raise anymore. So it's about motivating, it's about rewarding, it's about reinforcing, it's about great relationships with supervisors, it's about professional development to allow that to happen. There's lots of elements that come into it, but the very basis, the foundation Maslow's needs, I guess, if you go there, is to make sure that we're competitive and we're market-based in the first place.
We gotta fix this, then look at our total compensation, which includes everything from environment to work hour satisfaction, job satisfaction, career progression levels, all these things come into...
And benefits as well, of course.
With benefits, I agree 100% with that. So that's perfect. I think it's a great thing, and this also reconfirms our strategic plan. One of the main pieces we as a board created was competitive pay and hire the best, and I think sometimes to hire the best, as a board, we have to make that commitment, and this is what it takes, and I think it does take us to that progression. I think it's a great point you made. It's the basis to get us to where we want to go.
Absolutely.
So that performance pay is not a negative to our employees, it's a positive that comes in. It's gonna be a good thing for them as a whole. Okay? I'm perfect, unless there are any other comments, Dr. Gavassos? I think that'd be March 20th meeting, correct?
That's correct, President Hogg. Thank you.
We will be bringing this back on March 20th. At this item... Next on the agenda is items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, tonight, we'll be considering the items listed on your agenda and under consent. Ms. Powell, please share with us tonight... We've already done donations and bids.
We actually don't have any donations on the agenda this evening. We do have three bids, though, and in all three cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bid, and the bid's representing the best value to the district.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. We get lots of donations through the year, so we can go a week without them. So at this time, I'll take their motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Solins, a second by Mr. Hibs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Four trustees present, four trustees voting the affirmative. We've got a bug running around. We've got a couple of, two of them sick, and I like to call it being overworked, but two of them are sick and one of them has plumbing issues, so it's a home. So our other trustees are gone, but luckily, we have a short meeting tonight. Next, we'll move on to open forum for non-agenda items. I don't have any cards for non-agenda items, so we will move over to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Hogg, and tonight, we want to report on some events that have occurred in the district. I know it's only been a week, but there's a lot going on. We've had the Youth Art Month, our annual observance, to emphasize the value of arts in education for all youth and encourage them to participate. And you see some, a picture there of our artwork here and some students that came and were very much satisfied to come and display their artwork and talk about their artwork and explain why they created what they created. Wednesday night, the Texas School Public Relations Association Conference was held, and our communications department brought back six bronze, four silver, and three gold star awards. They also received a crystal certificate of merit in the school and community partnership category for the, of all things, achieve today, excel tomorrow, strategic plan rollout. And that was benefiting, or congratulations to Leslie McKenzie-Stokes and Spence for all their hard work.
Good job.
Thank you to you all. On Tuesday night, Martin High School held its Black History Month celebration, and I was honored to be part of this event. We had several presentations by students, and the choir performed as well, and a guest speaker was Breon Dennis, and he's the community outreach coordinator for the Texas Rangers, and that event was very, very well done. Last Friday, Roark Elementary Sweetheart Celebration for Principal Marsha Tucker took place. The school staff planned a big surprise for Ms. Tucker's 20th anniversary as the principal of Roark, and so they had a special chair for her to sit in the lobby so she could sit down and enjoy the day. And every student walked by and gave her a homemade valentine, and that's more than 750 students that showed their love for their principal, Ms. Tucker, and we want to congratulate her for her commitment to the district and to Roark Elementary and for her service to the students.
She probably didn't know what to do, getting to sit down.
That's right, and all the students coming...
Principals are not sitting very often.
It's a rare day, but she enjoyed that. Last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Johns Elementary I Love to Read Day, and several guest readers were there throughout, from the community. It was a great event, and the students were very attentive and very interested and asked a lot of very interesting questions. And so that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gavassos. Next, we'll move on to school board reports. Mr. Hibs.
Very quickly, I was at Webb Elementary today where the Rotary Club came out, and the Rotary there that is working with the Webb Elementary is doing some great things, sending all the fifth graders to camp, just allowing for them to have scholarships. It's an amazing organization doing wonderful things. I kept up via Facebook today, actually, of James and Barbara Adams. They went with their namesake to Sam Houston, helped serve lunches, rode the bus. I'm telling you that I stand in amazement of what those two individuals are still doing for the district, and I just wanted to put a huge shout-out to them. It's something to really appreciate in individuals, especially for the school that's named after them.
Mr. Hibs, we joked that we were getting two free employees when we named the school after them. We weren't really kidding. We knew they would be up there constantly, and they have definitely made us very proud namesakes for Adams Elementary. Any other school board reports? I'll mention one quick thing. Dr. Gavassos mentioned that we had the pleasure, along with Dr. Rice, attending the Black History Program at Martin. Great program. Breon Davis is one of the best speakers I've heard, and we are now connecting to work more in the AISD, as he's now in that new position of community outreach, and he is a game changer. He's got a lot of great ideas, so he's great. Just another thing, the Rangers really do a lot for this community. Texas Ranger Foundation does a ton, and they, their whole organization's very dedicated to Arlington, as they've only been in Arlington, so they've been very, very dedicated. We also had Ms. Peña, and Mr. Barron, and Ms. Solins, and myself had the pleasure of attending North Texas Area Association of School Boards last night. We started working on our 2015 grassroots legislation agenda. Yep, the legislature's about to be back. Everyone should be very worried, no, so... But they're gonna be back, and we had a great meeting with that. A little, I don't know if it's brag, Ms. Solins and I were elected to be Legislative Advisory Council members for our region, for Region 11. We'll be traveling down to Austin to help develop the school board legislative agenda. For the future legislative session, we also have a nice honor. We are hosting the entire North Texas Area Association of School Boards in April discussing partnerships. We will be discussing partnerships and showing other communities how the AISD works with partnerships, the UTA, through Tarrant County College, through our city. Our mayor will be speaking, our county commissioners will be there. We're not only having all these school board members from other areas of North Texas, we're inviting every single mayor from every other city to let them show how Arlington works on partnerships, because I really think the other districts are a little jealous about how well we do on partnerships, and we always try for more. So with that, and then one last moment of personal privilege, we've honored many teachers around the district these last couple of weeks, and Teachers of the Year. It's a huge honor that teachers only get once or twice, if they're lucky, in their career and in their career. and it's a bigger honor because it's voted on by your peers. And tonight, at, or at 3:30 this afternoon, I had the honor of surprising my wife as she won Teacher of the Year at Pope Elementary. And it is a distinct honor, and not many times do we talk about ourselves and our families what we're doing, but I have to take this minute to congratulate my wife for winning Co-Teacher of the Year with her. She won it. She's a 5th grade teacher and she won it with a 1st grade teacher, Desiree Rars, who's an Aggie, so I expect nothing less than her to win it through there. So, I'm very proud of my wife and Desiree for winning Co-Teacher of the Year. It's a very nice honor. So, have to take a minute and say congratulations to her. With that, any other further reports? Mr. Barron.
You wanna remind people to go vote?
Always, always a good thing. And with that, we are officially done with the main section, no more reports. We do have an employee hearing tonight. So, with that, as we, we will still be in open session, but we get to that as people get situated, 7:34, we will come back in 10 minutes at 7:45. We're taking a quick break. We'll call this meeting back to order at 7:47 PM. Next item on the agenda is consider the employee grievance hearing of Olga Lopez. We will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.074 and 551.082 of the Open Meetings Act. 551.074 provides the meeting may be closed with the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Sections 551.082 provides the Open Meetings Act does not require a school board to conduct an open meeting to deliberate in a matter in which a complaint or charge is brought against an employee of the school district by another employee and the complaint or charge directly results in a need for a hearing. I ask that everyone who is not party to this hearing or who is not going to participate in this hearing to now exit the boardroom. I thank you for your cooperation. We'll call this meeting back to order. Mr. Carlisle, would you please, and Ms. Jones, open the doors so the board can go back into Thank you, sir. Is anyone out there, Mr. Carlisle? Thank you. The board is now in open session. We've already opened the doors. Is there a motion on the employee grievance hearing?
I have one, Mr. President. I vote to uphold the administration's decision in this case.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hibbs to uphold and a second by Ms. Solins. Any other discussion, clarifications? Seeing none, please vote. Four trustees present, four trustees voting the affirmative to uphold the administration's recommendation. We are now at 8:28 PM, adjourned for the evening. Thank you.
(music)